I call this meeting of the Do'Nia Ana Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Anybody, if you've got any electronic equipment, phones and stuff, please put them in silent mode so that they don't interrupt the hearings. And we're ready for the roll call.
Commissioner Odranga.
Here.
Commissioner Lear.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Acosta.
Present.
Vice Chair Zerniak.
Just walked in.
And Chair Zarjes.
Approval of changes to the agenda. Look for a motion.
I move for approval of the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Fisher, second by Commissioner Lear to approve the agenda. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Other comments or questions? Here we go. Approval of the minutes, July 10th, 2025.
I move that we approve the minutes from the regular meeting of July 10th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Lear, second by Commissioner Fisher to approve.
And for the record, Commissioner Garcia is present. Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Garcia is present, came in. Are those, any comments on the approval of the minutes? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, old business? Seeing none. New business, case SU 25-016.
Good morning. Please raise, please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Christopher Valencia, 845 North Motel Boulevard.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good morning, chairs.
Good morning.
Commissioner. All right, got two cases today. First one is SU 25-016 for an SUP. We have the owner applicant, Kenneth McKinney. The representative is Eric Winter at 7401 Ice Canyon Road, Canyon Lane. It's East Community of Talaveta in an Oregon Mesa Ranch subdivision. The zoning is a D1L, which is a low-density residential limited, and the special request is for an SUP application to allow an accessory dwelling no larger than 1,800 square feet. Here we have the subject parcel. This is surrounded by federal land. And here's dripping Springs Road. Here's the land use. And see, it's developed here, all federal land. The subject property is a 2.5 acre parcel located within a D1L zone and has one house site-built for 6,349 square feet. Prior to February 2nd, 2017, the subject property in the Oregon Mesa Ranch subdivision was zoned ER3C conditions, zoning district, to establish a residential districts of single-family site-built homes on moderate to large-sized lots, specifically designed to meet the demand of those people whose lifestyles include raising and keeping large animals and small animals in a semi-real atmosphere. In 2016, the UDC and the official zoning map of Do'Nia County was approved by the Board of County Commissioners and went into effect in 2017. That's when the property was zoned D1L, Low Density Residential Limited. The surrounding area is a mix of single-family residential and vacant federal land. Here's the parcel close-up. It's at the end of a cul-de-sac of Ice Canyon Lane. Here's the zoning map, all D1L, surrounded by federal, and then R5L on the other side of Solid Ed Canyon Road. The applicant is requesting a special use permit for an accessory dwelling no larger than 1,800 square feet in a D1L zone, to provide comfortable and safe living accommodations for his, for their aging parents, both in their late 70s who require close proximity to family for their well-being. The heated area of accessory dwelling consists of 1,752 square feet, while the covered patio, entry porch, and garage is an extra 1,752 square feet. The total square footage is 2,956 square feet. Here is the accessory dwelling. This is the existing home, and it's going to be proposed location is off to the east side of the house. Fifteen letters of notification were mailed off on May 14th and June 23rd. The 14th was for the administrative SUP. There was opposition, so we re-advertised that on June 23rd. The agenda was posted in the paper as well, and signs were posted in a timely manner, and three letters of opposition were received. Here are the public hearing notices in front of the home. And this is the area of notification, 300 feet from the property line. This is the view from Ice Canyon Lane in the back of the subject parcel, and then the other picture on the right side is a view from the house, the house is behind me. This would be the shared driveway that the accessory dwelling would be built to the side, so that we, we did recommend community development that they do share the driveway. And then here is the location, the proposed location, and down here is a little drainage The signs were blown down, were blown off, and then with all the rain, and then the replacements, these are the replacement signs, a neighbor called that they were missing, so they went ahead and posted some new signs. Here are the applicable plans and policies for the SUP, and these are the plans and policies that we're looking for the criteria, overall criteria. The potential traffic flows and impacts, traffic impacts are minimal. Additional traffic created by additional residential homes will not substantially impact streets and roadways. Here are two goals and actions. Goal G2.2, to ensure regulations support the plan requirements, safeguard and extend desirable neighborhood character, safeguard open space, and develop in existing locations with existing infrastructure, and extend it as necessary. The second action would be update codes to provide tools to support an appropriate physical Potential water and sewer needs and supporting documentation show that the infrastructure is available. Water, water will be provided by Moon Gate Water, and wastewater will be by an approved septic tank permit. There will be relatively large to no impact of existing infrastructure. Access will be from Ice Canyon Lane, a paved county-maintained road. And there is also, there's no evidence of negative impacts to sensitive areas and historical significance, or endangered or rare species of animals and plant life. There is no significant impact on adjacent properties for an accessory dwelling, and this property is surrounded by single-family site-built homes. At the time of the building permit, any practices, best practices will be identified, will be noted and included in the review. So staff will work with the applicant and their contractor to ensure implementation of those practices. For our staff analysis, staff analysis of the decisionary criteria indicates the request as presented does comply with the decisionary criteria of the UDC. The subject property is 2.58 acres and is located in a rural, single-family residential neighborhood. The applicant is requesting a SUP to allow an accessory dwelling no larger than 1,800 square feet. The traffic impacts are minimal. Additional traffic created by additional home will not have a negative impact on the streets and roadways, and access will be from Ice Canyon Lane, a paved 50-foot rideaway, county-maintained road. The heated area of the accessory dwelling will consist of 1,752 square feet, and the total square footage of the accessory dwelling will be 2,956 square feet. Staff findings, the property is outside of any incorporated area. Municipal zoning authorities, so Do'Nia County and the Planning and Zone Commission, has jurisdiction to review. In this case, the request of this application is consistent with the requirements of the UDC, general notice requirements, and the public hearing for special use permit. The public notice requirements have been met and prescribed in the SUP, or SUPC. The pursuant to decisionary criteria of the SUP is consistent with the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents. With the goal G2.2, ensure regulations support the plan requirements, as well as the action A2.2, update the codes to provide tools to support an appropriate physical structure. The special use permit is appropriate, as Ice Canyon Lane is a paved 50-foot improved rideaway, private rideaway, that serves five residential, five residential lots. Our staff recommendations, based on the finds of fact, staff analysis and agency comments recommends approval of case SU 25-016 for, to allow an accessory dwelling. I stand for questions, and is the applicant here today?
Yes.
And the applicant is here as well.
Before we get the applicant up, do we have any questions of staff on this?
So just a, just a clarification, that the total square footage, you don't consider that in excess of the 1,800 square foot limit?
We look at the heated area. The heated area is what we count. The, we do call out, of course, the patio, garage, and everything else that's not heated, just to put into context the size of the home. But technically, the home is under the, the heated area is under the 1,800 square feet.
Okay.
That's been a question that we've been going back and forth and talking about.
Thank you.
Are there questions of staff? Okay, can we hear from the applicant?
Sure.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, can you please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record?
Eric, Eric Winter, 5747 Via Estrella.
Do you affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is a truth under penalty of law?
I do. Good morning.
Morning.
Here on behalf of Mr. Kenneth McKinney, the homeowner, property owner, seeks to approve the permit for building an accessory dwelling for his aging parents. I do apologize, there is a minor typo in the package you received. His parents are in their late 80s. To allay some of the fears that have been received in the letters of opposition, there is only one driver in the couple, so I do not feel that there is any impact to traffic patterns in the area. Apologize, let me get my papers in order. I'm sorry. No, it's fine, it's fine. So I've collated the letters of opposition and generated responses. I don't feel it's the appropriate venue to address arguments against the covenants of the neighborhood. Is that a appropriate assumption to make before the panel?
Yeah, we have no authority over the covenants.
Thank you, sir. So the letters of opposition receive, received, I'm just going to read through this very briefly. Neither the applicant's cover letter nor the county summary were included with the notice, therefore, we do not know the reason for the request. I believe that's been explained here. Obviously, seeks to build an accessory dwelling within county guidelines for his aging parents. The next, the letter of opposition was the traffic question. I don't believe that that is an impact here due to the age and driving capabilities of Mr. McKinney's parents. The Do'Nia flood commission has reviewed the package and has no opposition in pursuant to several references to an a large arroyo that runs just east of the stated property. A grading and drainage plan will be performed and filed if deemed necessary, and as will a storm water pollution prevention plan. The size of the drawing was one of the complaints in the letters of objection. As you can see here, the overall site plan, I will state that this is a draft. Final design will obviously take place after approval is granted for the special use permit, and all of the Oregon Mesa Ranch procedures will be followed through Architectural Review Committee and Design, et cetera. Moon Gate Water is the source and has no issues with the current plan and the addition The remainder of the objections, we're dealing with Oregon Mason Ranch covenants, and I am happy to take questions on those or review as necessary, but don't feel the need to go through those in detail.
Questions of the applicant.
Yeah, so where, where, where do they retain water on this property currently?
There is a large retention pond just to the right, to the east of the main driveway that will not be disturbed in this process.
And will you need additional space when you add this new dwelling?
That would be the result of a SWIP survey, and we have not received, gotten to that point yet, but all wastewater will be accounted for and diverted upon that is necessary.
Other questions of that, okay? I guess I have one. Looking at this floor plan, you stated neither of the people living here would be driving, Tony the one driver in the house, and yet you were putting in a two-car garage, and it just seems like a very large area for two people like that.
Understood. They are very active, in their late 80s. She enjoys crafting, which is the reason for the office space, to have a room for that. They have extended family that they would like to be able to have visit and would like to have parking available for a visiting automobile. Obviously, a beautiful view of the mountains on the back half of the property, hence the large back patio area and open views to the mountains.
Thank you, I'm just thinking about the square footage.
Yes, sir.
Additional with the housing. Other questions of the applicant? Okay, anyone here wishing to comment on this case, in favor or opposed? No one in the audience?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand.
I'm sorry, if you're, would you like to comment on the case, either in favor or opposed to this? Come on up.
If you can just step up to the podium.
Yeah, step, step up to the podium, and you'll be sworn in by Eileen.
Good morning. If you can just speak into the mic, so everybody, there you go, thank you. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Linda Gold. I'm a neighbor, 7400 Ice Canyon Lane.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Speak into the mic, please.
Yes, I'm, I'm an immediate neighbor. I know I'm not supposed to bring up other issues like the covenant. I know I'm not supposed to bring up other issues like the covenants, but we did buy our home three years ago anticipating that there wouldn't be any possibility of a building for a potential rental. I don't know what, what the plan is Ken has, once his, his parents are no longer around, what happens to that building? Does it become a rental, or what? It's kind of a big question, especially if they are indeed in their late 80s. It's one of my first questions. It does impact our whole neighborhood. Casitas, I did a lot of reading about what could be defined as a casita, and for this area, it seems like this is beyond that scope, especially with garages, let alone two. I've never seen or heard of a drainage pond whatsoever in that area. The other side of the building, the west side, all their drainage comes down to us and our driveway off their property, so I don't have a lot of faith in the flood control drainage commission. Again, and then my other concern is, and I know this is outside of this realm and your scope, but there are already multiple people living in a 7,800 square foot home that belongs to a single man with a four-car garage, and there are also multiple cars. I don't, I don't understand why he needs a separate dwelling. I guess that's all I have to say. And the traffic, there will be traffic, there's already crazy amount of traffic, just to that one building with deliveries and multiple, I believe there's multiple people living there, so that's all I have. Thank you very much for letting me.
I just, I want to make, I want to clarify a statement I made earlier. If you want to comment on the covenants, there's no restriction on that, you can, you can talk to us about it, it's just that.
You have no enforcement.
Right, it's strictly a.
And it is part of the covenants. It's a single family with a casita, although I don't believe the casita definition covers the amount or the size of a casita. However, it just, it just doesn't seem right when he already has a building, it's almost 8,000 square feet, I don't get it. And it, there's other things that have occurred in the neighborhood that I don't believe should have been approved. I can see a brand-new building straight across from me that is a two-story building that somehow got approved as an accessory dwelling. Well, it's a two-story commercial building that housed all the contractors' building and construction equipment. To me, that's a quasi-commercial property. And also, around the corner, it's occurred again, because we have a lot of contractors in the neighborhood, so it seems like things are a little out of balance for a single family designated area. Anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Good morning.
Good morning. My first name is Richard, R-I-C-H-A-R-D, last name is spelled D as in dog, Z as in zebra, I-A-K, pronounced Zack like Z-A-K. I have been a resident of Las.
Can you, can you state your, excuse me, your address for the record?
7550 Ice Canyon Lane, Las Cruces, New Mexico, 88011, ma'am.
Thank you. Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today is a truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen. I hope you're having a great day today, and I'm so happy to be in front of you today to have you listen to my opposition. I have been a resident of Las Cruces, New Mexico for 50 years. I came here in 1975, and I've seen a tremendous amount of growth over that period of time. I have been a resident of Oregon Mesa Ranch, the same subdivision as Mr. McKinney's proposal to build a new residence, not a casita, on the property. I've been there for 20 years. I would like to go ahead and say today that I straight-out do oppose the construction of this home. I think that everybody here in front of the commission cannot truthfully say that this is a casita. A casita in the state of New Mexico, in many different counties, has restrictions on the size, some of them are 500 to 700 feet. The city of Albuquerque will allow a casita no larger than 1,200 square feet. This proposal is for a total of 2,956 square feet. It is not considered a casita by any means. This is a full family residence that is being proposed to be built. There's an office space, there's two bedrooms, there's other areas of the home, there's a two-car garage. Right now, the resident that owns the house, Mr. Ken McKinney, is a single man who bought the house in the year 2020. He's been in it for a period of five years. The house presently is 6,349 square feet of living space, as documented by the presentation today. Adding another 2,956 square feet equals residences totaling 9,305 square feet. Mr. McKinney is not married, he is a single man. At the present time, he has a girlfriend that lives with him, and the girlfriend has a daughter that occupy approximately the 6,349 square feet. I realize that you do not have jurisdiction, gentlemen and ladies, over the covenants, but I have to say, ever since Mr. McKinney moved in, he is in strict violation of many violations of the restrictive covenants. Number one, the 6,349 square foot house that's currently there has four garages. The four garages are occupied, three of them are occupied with junk. They can't even park their own vehicles in their garages, and yet they want to add two more garages to the property. There is no retention pond, despite what Mr. Winter says, on the east side of the house. I've lived there for 20 years, there is none at all. There are no gutter systems on the home. When it rains, it comes off of the tile, the Spanish tile on the house, and just drains into the property. There is a large arroyo that drains from the south side, southeast side of the home, from the east of the Oregon mountains to the west, with large culverts running under Oregon Mesa Ranch to defer the water from Mr. McKinney's property going down to the west side by the gulls. I am stuck with also a large arroyo that drains through underneath Ice Canyon Lane onto my property, and I had to make sure that when I added a detached garage, my original property was rejected because the way the water ran off the roof, and I had to go through a total change to make sure that none of the water from my detached garage goes into the arroyo. That is going to be the same situation with the McKinney property. I see no reason, in fact, on the covenants, the covenants state that if you have garages, you must park your cars in the garage. Right now, there's an abandoned car with Minnesota plates, because that's where Mr. McKinney is from, that sits on the property totally idle. For the last five years, there's been a box trailer that sits outside of the house. And most importantly, commissioners, Mr. McKinney is not a, he is the owner of the house, but Mr. McKinney is not a full-time resident of that house. Mr. McKinney is a nurse anesthetist, from my understanding, that works at the hospital in Deming. There are times where he has gone from the house and only spends anywhere from maybe five to 10 to 15 days a month at the residence, the physical residence, so he is not going to be here 100% to take care of his parents. Now, I can understand his narrative in his letter about why he wants to have this for his elderly parents. He talks a lot about compassion. He talks about how it's going to be an advantage to the community. If he has 87-year-old parents and he lives in Deming, how the hell is he going to be able to be able to monitor them and take care of them when he has no immediate family in the house living with him? He has no children that live with him, he does not have a spouse that lives with him, it is just him. Mr. McKinney does absolutely nothing, nothing to maintain the property in any particular way, and I challenge, I challenge every one of you to deter this decision and table it, and I would like to see you personally go out and see the property. This house is massive, and to say, why do we have to add another residence, and then the Curry, this is a Curry development. This is a Curry development between Paul Curry, Tim Curry, and John Curry, and Paul Curry was a commissioner. These are very powerful people in the state of New Mexico and very powerful people in Dona Anna County. In the covenants, they explicitly state that there will only be one family residence on the property, there are no exceptions for things of this nature, but in the past, the Currys and the Architectural Committee, which is based by the Currys, the three of them, John, Paul, and Tim Curry, to approve the property through an architectural committee. They have allowed casitas to be built on the property. These casitas are basically attached to their existing home. This particular drawing is very small, it's very difficult to read. In fact, I am quite surprised that the applicant, Mr. Winter, would even send out something like this to the community, where you cannot even read the names, you can't even read the numbers, it's just absolutely absurd at all. When you look at the little box on the very bottom, it's very difficult to even determine what the square footage was until we saw the presentation today by Mr. Valencia. So the covenants restrict two residential homes on one property, and if you all can sit here today and say that this is a casita and it's not a residence, I would be shocked. And I'm not going to ask you any questions, because that's not my theory, and I don't think you're going to, you have the responsibility to answer them to me. Bill is shaking his head, and I totally understand that. A couple of points that I would like to make, due to the fact that we did not receive these until my wife drafted up a copy of the agenda and a list of all of the different things. Signs were posted on the property. We've had some rain, and those signs have come off the property four or five times. Mr. McKinney comes homes, he sees the signs, he does nothing about those signs, they lay on the ground, they're gone, the wind has taken them away. It was my wife that called to Mr. Valencia and said those, those, those signs are down, notifying the owners of the community of what's going on. There were no, there were no signs on the special permit on the entrance of Oregon Mesa Ranch, so it was extremely limited of who got what, and I guess it's, the ruling may be within 300 feet of the property or whatever. So that is untrue, that those signs were down. As far as traffic goes, the traffic that comes out of that house at 7401 is consistent and constant throughout the day. There are neighbors that are in the area, and I will hate to say this, but they think that the house is a drug house. They see people coming and going at 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock in the morning, coming in and out of that residence at 7401 Ice Canyon Lane. I see it, our neighbors see it, they wonder what's going on, lots of questions. That may not be in your realm, but there's a reason for this going on, and I think further investigation needs to take place by this particular committee before you guys come back and say, we approve this. There has, I wrote to Paul Curry, who lives in our, our area, who is one of the owners of the, one of the prime developers. I asked him if the plans were approved by the Architectural Committee. That was over 30 days ago. Mr. Curry failed to even respond or have the courtesy to even answer my questions. So I think there's a lot of questions, is what does the Architectural Committee even think about building a house that is 1,752 square feet and 2,900 square feet total composition of the property? And I think that's, that, Mr. Robert brought that up. You know, is 2,900 square feet really needed for a couple that's 87 years old, two-car garage that makes six-car garages on the property? Is that really necessary? Why not approve a 5 or 700 square feet casita where it's more, probably more reasonable for 87-year-old people to take care of a 5 or 700 square foot property rather than 2,900 square foot property? Even though there's an addition there on covered patios and so forth, it makes no sense to me that that type of square footage is necessary. That would bring the total property for residences to 9,305 square feet. Another point that I think Mrs. Gold brought up, very, very important, is because of the age of the parents, 87, what is their life expectancy? I'm a retired financial advisor of 35 years here in Las Cruces. The average life expectancy for a male and a female now today is 85 to 87 years old. They've already passed their life expectancy. What could possibly happen to this residence if they are deceased down the road, whether it's two years, five years, or 10 years? The likelihood of lasting another 10 years is probably very slim. What is going to happen with that property? The covenants of the property say that homes that are built like that are not available for rental property, they must be lived in. So the idea of building this house under the compassion of their parents, of his parents, I just don't believe that. I think that there's an ulterior motive here somewhere along the line. And with all of these question marks that are out there, what's going to happen with the Architectural Committee? I mean, you guys may go through all of this work today, plans may be drawing up, I'm sure Mr. McKinney is already spending money already, Mr. Winter is not working for free, I think he does this for a living. He was one of the guys that came up, in my understanding, a couple of months ago when Currys wanted to expand their Oregon Mesa 4 and 5, and he actually opposed that. Now, with the covenants, he's, he's saying, let's approve it. Let's approve another residence where the covenants say you cannot build two houses on one property. I'm on, I'm on 2.88 acres. If I had that availability, I have plenty of room to build another house. To build another house, maybe send, sell it, maybe go ahead and rent it? There's rental properties already in our, in our area, bed and breakfast, it's there. But I would like to see the committee give some real thought to this, not just approve it on what we see in the paperwork, I think there's a lot more to this. There are five homes excluding Mr. McKinney's, that makes four of us, that are on, on, on Ice Canyon. Every one of the property owners oppose the building of this residence of 2,900 square feet on that property. So I ask the commission today to please consider tabling a decision on this particular request until you get some sort of finalization from the developers of the property. If they build a single-family residence, what are the developers going to do? Are they going to take action against the resident? The developers don't do anything for the current residents today. If we have problems with the covenants, the Currys do absolutely nothing about it, and I don't think they will do anything at all to this particular individual. So you guys and ladies, you are the ones that are going to stand up for the community. You're the ones that are going to stand up for the residents that have major concerns. And I ask once again, for the third or fourth time, to please table this until there's further review. I think it would be nice to see Alejandro, Mel, Robert, Bill, Daniel, Teresa, actually, Crystal, actually spend some time to go out there and take a look at the property and ask yourselves, do we really need to have a 2,900 square foot residence next to a house that's 6,400 square feet to begin with, under these circumstances? So I appreciate your time today for listening. I really appreciate that all of you would drill down on this for your consideration and make an ultimate decision. Let's do this right from the start, gentlemen and ladies, so that we know we are on the right track. I realize you have no jurisdiction at all over the covenants of the property, but the covenants are there for a. Let's do this right from the start, gentlemen and ladies, so that we know we are on the right track. I realize you have no jurisdiction at all over the covenants of the property, but the covenants are there for a reason. When we bought the property and we closed on the property, every homeowner signed agreements on the closing of the property with the title companies that we agreed to abide by the covenants of the property. And I expect that to be maintained. This is not a subdivision where the houses are two or $300,000. This is a subdivision where houses run from anywhere from 600 to 2 million, two and a half million dollars if you drove through the community. So I thank you for your time today. I hope I've been somewhat organized in my presentation. And I think the commission here could do a great service to the community by doing further investigation. I thank you for your time today, and I hope that the result can be good for everybody. We do not oppose a casita being built on the property. What we oppose is dramatic size of the residence that's going to be built when it's probably not even necessary, especially when we have a homeowner that is a part-time resident. Bill, thank you so much, and you all have a good day.
Any questions for the gentleman?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else who wishes to comment on this case? Okay. Commission, what's your pleasure?
Oh, Bill, we want to let the applicant respond. I want to have the applicant respond.
Let the applicant respond, I'm sorry. I'm not awake yet this morning, I apologize.
No, sir, you're, you're fine, you can continue.
I would just like to say that Mr. McKenney has the means and the space to move his parents in nearby to him. While it is true he is employed currently as an anesthesiologist, working primarily out of Deming, New Mexico, it is recently that he is the only anesthesiologist working in Deming, New Mexico, and is on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week currently, and has been for approximately the last forty-five days. I cannot say that I know his, his personal business, but he does work very hard in Deming, New Mexico to serve the area there. This is his primary residence, though he does have a small residence in Deming that he stays at when he is working in off-hours, so on and so forth. He has a strong desire to have his parents close to him and provide a comfortable living space for them within the guidelines of the county rules.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further?
I have a question for staff. So, in, in your evaluation of the application, do you consider need?
We do not consider need, no.
So it's, it's actually irrelevant to the application?
The need of the house, correct, yes. And that's why we ask for the narrative, because the narrative is what gives us the context to why they need this, their own need. We do have that question many times, we ask that same question, but we're not in the liberty to
That's fine.
to deem out who gets what. So we take the narrative very seriously, and I think, and mind you, we've received other narratives that are not as concrete as some other, as other ones.
So in your evaluation of the application, you saw no negative impacts from this?
We were not, we didn't receive any negative reviews from the Flood Commission. We didn't receive any negative reviews from Fire Department as well as the engineers. The road, the road is, was looked at by the engineers, it was, there is a review that's given to the case, so it is reviewed by county, county staff.
Chris, do we know if there's any outstanding complaints against the property owner?
We've never received any complaints until this went out.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. For staff.
Go ahead.
Just to clarify, code now allows for eighteen hundred square foot, up to eighteen hundred square foot casitas, living space heated and cooled, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure so that everybody understood that.
Now also, the, the name casita is thrown around really, really easy. This is definitely not a casita by the definition, so it's really difficult to sort of stop people when they come in and talk about a casita. We say we correct them by calling it an accessory structure. That's what this is, it's not a casita. Accessory dwelling, I apologize. If it were a pergola or if it were something else, that would be an accessory structure because this is an accessory dwelling because it has the kitchen and restrooms.
Yeah, I had the similar question to, to him there, but just specifics to the D1L. It does specify that it has to be the eighteen hundred or less heated, is that correct?
The heated is brought up when you start splitting hairs, it doesn't say heated in the, in the code.
It does or it doesn't?
Does not.
So who determines?
Community Development.
Okay, and then for the garage, also the D1L, does it specify that it can have more garages for the accessory dwelling or is that not there?
My understanding, there's no, there's no description or extra information on having garages, there's no restriction, or having a garage is permitted in a D1L zone. So you're allowed to have a garage in that zone.
Yes, but they already have two, is what I'm
They already have four.
Four.
Correct. I've, again, we, we don't limit people on what they have. We have many vehicles at home, so I, Community Development is not here to restrict development in terms of what will people allow to have, so there's no restriction on the amount of garages that you can have. There is a restriction to the amount of area that, that, that many garages do have, and they fall within that guideline of, of the amount of space and area that they have that includes a garage.
Is okay.
Correct.
Okay, those are my questions, thank you.
Mr. Chair, we do have the chief building official on the line if we have any specific questions, because my understanding, it is heated versus unheated based upon the International Building Code. But our ordinance specifically, specifically calls out eighteen hundred square feet for an accessory dwelling. We do allow up to 5,000 square feet for accessory structures or 10% of the lot size. So we consider garages, porches as accessory structures. But Sean Vick is on the line if we have any specific questions on that.
There's also a restriction on the percentage of what can be built on a property. Do you know what that number is and what this is occupying?
Generally, the code addresses permeable surfaces, but I believe in the D1L.
I need to swear you in. Sorry. Please write your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Janine Diviac, 845 North Motel.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, and lot coverage is not applicable in the D1L zoning district.
I'm sorry?
It's not applicable, the lot coverage or lot, but it is in the smaller-sized lots.
Okay.
I have one more question, I just thought, just I guess a cross-check. Are there any other casitas of this size in that area that you know?
There are other casitas in the neighborhood, I can't answer correctly saying of this size, but the entire neighborhood, when I drove through, the houses are just very large, so to me, they, I couldn't really compare.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion based on the findings of facts, staff analysis, and agency comments to approve the case SU 25-016, special use permit to construct an accessory dwelling on a 2.58 parcel.
I second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lear, second by Commissioner Fisher, to approve case SU 25-016. Call the roll, please.
Wait, point of order.
Point of order.
Chris?
Sir?
We don't have any comment from the Flood Commission at all. They, they said it was okay.
The packet says, just want to make sure that we can read their comments. It's okay for the SUP, however, a building permit for the dwelling may require a grading and drainage, drainage plan.
Okay, okay, thank you.
There is the arroyo that I did
Page sixteen of your packet.
Right here. That's why I tried to get it from an angle. There is this, the arroyo that they're speaking of is right here, and this is actually where the property line is. And I tried to grab it within the image. So there is a lot of topography out there, and that is a depression. So that's, I think the, the arroyo that they're mentioning and talking about, so I think there is, and again, Flood, Flood Commission did look at this case.
And you didn't, you didn't see evidence of a flood pond?
On this property, yes. This is the depression, the arroyo, that is connected to a culvert under the road, and then on the other side is a larger depression, if you will, a larger deep arroyo. So this is connected to a larger system.
Okay.
Do I begin the roll call? Commissioner Lear?
Yes.
Commissioner Odranga?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Acosta? Vice Chair Zerniak?
Yes.
Chair Zargis?
No. And the reason I'm voting no is the size, is the size, and I believe that an eighteen hundred square foot casita is more appropriate than something like that, especially for people in their 80s.
So I have that the motion did pass five to two, is that correct?
It passes five to two.
Okay, thank you. Does Commissioner Acosta need to state his reasoning?
On the sidebar that Janine and I had, it concerns me tremendously on the safety and general welfare of the public, especially when we have changes of climatic conditions regarding weather, especially in this area. I did not like that conjunction regarding the Flood Commission. And that word goes to however, okay? And so therefore, on the grading plan like Commissioner Zerniak and I, he and I have the same thought on that, we're experiencing a lot of rain, very unusual to the area. And I know you can see that they channelize water through the culverts on that pavement, but I'm not convinced that this particular building will not impact the other properties around there. And, and I base it on the fact that maybe engineering should have been more aware that the conditions not only impact that specific property, but all the other properties around it. And I was just there recently in the specific area. I didn't even know that this case was coming up. And there was a lot of water flow in that area, and the arroyos were really running. And that's the reason why I voted no. The fact is that I think that the Flood Commission should have been, given us CFM in that area. And, and that's why I voted no.
All right, well, it's five to two, let's move on.
Going to sleep?
Eileen's passing out some extra documentation. This is from the applicant himself and from Mrs. Frye, which already has an opposition letter in there, she wanted to send another one. Okay, great. Give you all a few minutes just to look over those documents.
Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Christopher Valencia, 845 North Motel Boulevard.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth under penalty of law?
I do. Looks like it's the Christopher show today. I'll go ahead and start. For our second case, we have SU 25-017. The owner applicant is Charles and Diane M. Blakeman. They're at 5049 Ventana View in Talaveta subdivision, in an R5L zone, rural density residential limited. And their request as well as a special use permit application to allow an accessory dwelling no larger than eighteen hundred square feet. Here is their parcel, that is Soladad Canyon Road, and then behind them is all federal Here's the aerial land use. Their subject property is 2.5 acre parcels located in an R5L zone, currently has one 2,900 square foot home. Prior to February 2017, the subject parcel was zoned ER2, a district which is intended as a residential district of a single-family site-built homes on large, on large lots, specifically designed for certain, keeping of certain lifestyles with no more than one dwelling unit and a customary accessory building upon one lot. In 2016, the UDC and official zoning map of Dona Anna County was approved by the Board of County Commissioners and went into effect. On 2017, when the subject property was zoned an R5L from ER2, the surrounding area is a mix of single-family residential site-built homes and vacant federal land. Here is the 2.5 acre parcel, and this is, this sits above a hill, so you're looking, when you're at the road, you're looking up to it. Here is the R5L zone, and the roads, you can, you can actually see, they're, they're all private roads, they just, they just stem out from Soladad Canyon Road. The applicant has requested a special use permit for an accessory dwelling no larger than eighteen hundred square feet in R5L zone for the purpose of increasing the value of the property, family visitation, and possible short-term and long-term rental in the future. The accessory dwelling is only 1,000 square feet in size. Here is the home, the floor plan, and it would be located back here. There were twelve letters emailed, sent out, notification to the, on two areas, I'm sorry, tripping my words, May 14th and June 23rd. May 14th was the first, first time we sent out letters, and they did receive opposition. So we resent, resent out letters on June 23rd. The agenda was posted in the paper on May 14th and June 23rd as well, and signs were posted at time of manner, and two letters of opposition were received. Here are the notification signs in the front yard, subject property is right behind it, as well as here is the, the home. This is the arrow of notification, 200 feet, 200 feet from the, I'm sorry, 300 feet from the property line. This is on, this is on Ventana View, looking at Soladad Canyon Road. It is a private-maintained road, so therefore it's basically like a mountain road. Here are the applicable plans and policies for their criteria of approval for SUP. These are the plans as well, the policies. For the decisional criteria, traffic impacts are going to be minimal. Additional traffic created by one additional resident residential home will not substantially impact streets and sideways, roadways. For the two goals, there's a, there's a need for commercial residential activity and how it complies with the Plan 2040 and Comp Plan. Goal G 2.2 is to ensure regulations support the plan requirements, as well as the action A 2.2 is updated codes to provide tools to support an appropriate physical structure. Number three, the water will be provided by Moon Gate Water and wastewater is provided by an approved septic tank. There will be relatively little to no impact of existing infrastructure. There will be relatively little to no impact of existing infrastructure. Access will be from Ventana View Road, which is a private road. And there is no evidence of negative impacts to sensitive areas, historical significance, or endangered or rare species of animals and plant life. Number six, decisional criteria, there is no significant impact on adjacent properties for, for an accessory dwelling. The property is surrounded by single-family residential and site-built homes. At the time of the building permit, any best practices that are identified will be noted and included in the reviews. Staff will work with the applicant and their contractor to ensure implementation of these practices. The staff analysis of decisional criteria indicates the request as presented does comply with decisional criteria of the UDC. The subject property is two-and-a-half acre parcel located in a rural, single-family residential neighborhood, and the applicant is requesting the SUP for an accessory dwelling no larger than eighteen-hundred square feet. Traffic impacts are minimal, and additional traffic created by additional residential home will not have a negative impact on streets and roadways. For the staff findings, the property is outside of any incorporated municipal zoning authorities, so Dona Anna County and the planning P&amp;Z Commission have jurisdiction to review this case. The request of this application is consistent with the requirements of the UDC for a public hearing for the SUP. Public notice requirements have been met and prescribed by the SUPC, as well as pursuant to decision or criteria, this SUP is consistent with the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents per the county, per the intent of the UDC. Of the following goals, the G-two-point-two to ensure regulations support the plan requirements, and action two-point-two, update codes to provide tools to support an appropriate physical structure. Staff recommendations are based on these facts of findings of staff analysis and urgent agency comments. The staff recommends approval of case number SU twenty-five zero-one-seven to allow an accessory dwelling. Go ahead. Thank you.
Questions of staff?
Questions for staff?
The applicant here?
Good morning. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Chuck Blakeman, fifty forty-nine Ventana View Road, Las Cruces, New Mexico, eight-eight oh-one-one.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for hearing me. We're intending to build a casita on our property. We just moved in from Denver about three months ago. We bought the property sight unseen because how often do you get to live in this kind of beautiful place? And then we did a complete overhaul of the interior of the house to bring it up to code and bring it up to speed. There's a seven-hundred fifty square foot casita on the property just to the right of us. Where, the topography of this land was, was leveled out, I think somewhere between twelve and fifteen years ago by the previous owner, probably four casitas, so there'll be no grading of the property, no disturbing any arroyos or water to do this. The, the, Zillow shows our house, or shows our property as for sale by owner. One of the neighbors had a, had a concern that we were actually building this to fix and flip it. We're not. When we bought the house, Zillow took all the pictures down, and her family wanted to see the pictures, and the only way to put the pictures back up was to put it on as for sale. So we put it on for sale by owner. But I'm sure you were not fixing and flipping this property. We are there to stay for the rest of our lives. The usages of the property, one of the things my wife has dreamed of for years is to have a retreat place for, for people. We know people all over the world who are involved in various kinds of nonprofit work and, and service, and she's always dreamed of having a place where people could come and rest for a few days and relax and not have to pay a lot of money to do that. And that's one of the usages of the property. We have families scattered from, excuse me, Portland to Los Angeles to Reno, Cleveland, Philadelphia area, and Wales. And that's just our immediate family. And so we want a place for them to stay when they come. Our house is actually only twenty-one hundred square foot, the, the main house with two other bedrooms. So that's a usage for it. And then we do intend to have associates come once in a while. Again, I, I have associations around the world, and I'd like to have people come, I regularly do in Denver, have people come three or four at a time to have little meetings to talk about how we can improve the world, basically, make the world a better place. And we want a place for them to stay that they don't have to travel twenty minutes from a hotel. And then we do intend to, at times, do this as a short-term rental as well. We will have very strict restrictions on doing that. We live there. We'll be the closest ones to the property. And so we will not have more than four people in that property. We prefer couples. There will be no noise, no parties. And we'll put that in the ads, and my, my children have been running VRBO properties for a decade now, and they know how to do this, and they've gotten plenty of response, plenty of support from VRBO kicking people out who have had any noise violations. And so we will, we'll do that as well. And then we also put in our letter, because we wanted to do full exposure, we didn't want to hide anything. It's not neighborly of us to do. There is the light, the possibility down the road that we could do this as a long-term rental. We don't see that. We absolutely don't see it at any time. But it's possible. And so we put it in the letter, that that is a possibility, that we would rent this. But again, we live a hundred and fifty feet from that. It's a shared driveway. It's not going to be, if we ever did that, we would make sure there would be people that we want in that building. The building will be built exactly like the main house. It's a, it's kind of a Spanish territorial with parapets, adobe. And it'll be built in the same style both inside and out, very high, high-end finishes. We, we will also place, we have water catchment systems on the property. We have about seven thousand five hundred gallons of water catchment on the property right now for the roof systems that are already in place, two water things and, and keep the drains down. And we will put a water catchment system on top of the casita as well, another fifteen hundred gallons to do the same thing. It's also not drawing power. Everything is run by solar, and the casita will also be run on solar. The, we, we don't see any impact in the surrounding area, at best one extra car a day to our road. I'm just reading my own notes to see what I had here. Yeah, we are responsible neighbors. We live there. This is going to be our dream home, and so we're going to make sure that this works for our neighbors. We want to be good neighbors. We don't want to be those people who moved in and, and took over the property and, and made everybody mad. So we're going to work very hard with our neighbors to make this work for them. We, we looked in, first in, for a year in Albuquerque and couldn't find anywhere that had the suitable property for us to do the kind of things we wanted to do, the covenants. And the restrictions were very high on doing anything like this. Then we looked in Tucson and found a few properties thirty minutes out on dirt roads that were, felt like we were in the middle of nowhere. And we had multiple people tell us while we were doing that, you should move to Las Cruces. We didn't even know where it was. But during that process, we decided we'd look at Las Cruces. We came by, spent one night here, came back a month later, and decided this would be our forever home. Because we found that we had the covenants, we made sure we connected with the zoning people beforehand and got emails in writing saying, yes, this kind of thing is possible on these kinds of properties. And that's why we moved here. So we wanted to be sure that we weren't trying to do something that might have to change covenants and bully our neighbors and do all that. We want to do things that are within the confines of what already exists in terms of the covenants and restrictions, and that's why we bought where we are. I think that's all I've got.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? Come forward and be sworn in.
Good morning. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Diana Frye, fifty thirty-seven Ventana View.
If you wouldn't mind just speaking in, because we have people watching live. Thank you.
Absolutely. Diana Frye, fifty thirty-seven Ventana View.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pull the microphone close.
Okay. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. And my, I'm in opposition to the auxiliary building. And my view is, I work for NMSU, and I plan to retire from NMSU. And we are neighbors to the north of the Blakemans. And I know the Blakemans are great people. I'm, I, my thought, my feelings on this, my opposition, is at NMSU, I've experienced us trying to bring in talent. And one specifically, we had an executive candidate come in. Would have been great for NMSU. But he was unhappy with some of the exclusivities of our neighborhoods here in Cruces. I sent him addresses in Pocacho Hills and in our neighborhood in Talavera, in off of Sonoma. And he was coming from California. And he has young daughters, and he says, you know, I'm, I don't feel that there's areas in Cruces that were of his taste. And free of rentals. And so my, my thought is specifically on vacation rentals here in Donna Ana County in Las Cruces, from a business perspective. I would like to implore a impact study, investigation, thoughts, development on how we want to grow Las Cruces and Donna Ana to accommodate all peoples. I think it's, areas need to be there to accommodate people who do want to have vacation rentals and rentals. There are disparities on management of rentals, vacation rentals. Some are great. I think the Blakemans would be great. But who, that might come in after the Blakemans, what are their management styles? And what happens to our neighborhoods and the stability of our neighborhoods in bringing in the talent to grow Las Cruces? If we don't have neighborhoods that are exclusive to the different tastes of people who coming in, we need to consider that. We're losing people. We're gaining people, which is great, but we're also losing people. And what is the impact of that? We're losing talent. I've seen it personally at NMSU. And I, NMSU is in great need of executive talents, of management talents coming in. And we need the neighborhoods to accommodate those different people with those experiences and talents. And I would implore considerations of that. If we have rentals allowed in every neighborhood of our community, where, where, where's the exclusivity for those who don't want that? I personally have had experiences with vacation rentals, and they haven't been good. Yes, they sometimes get out of hand, and the owners have to come and take care of it. I don't want to have to experience that at all. My daughter experienced that. So from a personal basis, I, I prefer a neighborhood without rentals. And, and nothing against the Blakemans. I think they're great. I think their dreams are great. There's just a difference in where I want to live, where I've experienced talents coming into NMSU who, where they want to live. And I don't think we're offering that diversity in our community. So that there is different places to consider, and we're not losing talent. And that's all I want to say. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Do you know if there are rentals in your neighborhood?
There is one to the north of us, and that's where my daughter had a bad experience. We were sitting on the, our back patio. And they, the house is on a higher level, and so the occupants were looking down on us and catcalling my daughter. And she was very uncomfortable. So trying to find that private spot, yes. It is now becoming harder to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else speak on this? Go ahead.
Good morning. Please state your name and address for the record.
Randy Frye, fifty thirty-seven Ventana View.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for your time. As, as my wife just spoke, we're on Ventana View. We're right next door to the Blakemans. And just to give you a little background of myself, I mean, I've been here in New Mexico for almost sixty-eight years, most of the time in Las Cruces. Raised here, you know, Conley, Zia, Cruces, I, I go Bulldogs, NMSU. Have a couple degrees from there, so go Aggies. I worked for many years at NMSU, retired, and then I moved on to be working with families and youth which support Dona Anna County. Building this home had been a dream of ours. We look to Talavera. We love that it is actually up against BLM land. And quiet neighborhood, roads are small. They talked about no impact, but there's many times one car have to pull off to the side so the other one can pass. So that's just a little bit of background of myself and our, and our family. You know, we built our dream house. We've been there. We plan to stay there. And the letter that the Blakemans have, over and over, they've talked about themselves and their family running rentals and VRBOs. Yes, you can make a lot of money with VRBOs. We totally understand that. But that's something while we're living there, we like to enjoy the peace, the quiet, the smaller number of homes. I really believe that the subdivision was built with the idea of one home per lot. That's what I, I believe it was built for. Having a rental next to us is of no, no interest. We do not believe that it's going to raise the value of the home. We think it'll be detrimental to the neighborhood. And as my wife mentioned, we have had issues with other, you know, rental properties, specifically with our daughter. A casita up to eighteen hundred square foot, that's what they're requesting. Again, a casita of that size is really not a casita. You know, then you have the impact on the water. People said there's no, won't be any impact. And you have to have another septic. Well, yeah, there, there will be an impact to the, to the subdivision, to our road specifically, to the facilities there. It's kind of interesting, and what I'll wrap up with quickly is, in their letter, at the end of it, the latest letter that we saw, well, in ten to fifteen years, we may decide that, yeah, we want a full-time rental. That's what they want to have done. I think it'll be sooner than that, but they state that, well, for us in ten to fifteen years, we plan to be living in our dream home, not next door to a rental property. So we definitely oppose it. I appreciate your time. I appreciate your service to Dona Anna County. And thank you.
Any questions? And thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this? Comments from the commission? Mr. Beaven, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, I'd just love to respond. And I would talk to them personally, but this is the microphone, so I'll point this way. I totally get. First of all, I'm going to be, I'm a business advisor with the, one of the things I will do will be a business advisor with New Mexico State University. So go Aggies. I'm excited about that. And the casita will not be visible from the Frye's property. They will look at our house, and they will never see the casita. We removed a very ugly big RV tent where the casita will go. We hope it'll improve the view for everybody. But I want to just quickly address the, I have the very same concern that they have when, when they say, you know, where are the exclusive neighborhoods where there aren't rentals? And what, you know, do I want to be in a neighborhood with rentals? We didn't buy this place in order to change the covenants and try and get somebody to do something, to bend their will to us, to be the bullies, to come in and... do something, to bend their will to us, to be the bullies, to come in. And we looked for almost two years for a place where we could find that allowed us to actually do what we wanted to do, to build a casita. And I plan to live till I'm 120, not 90. And, and I, and I cannot foresee in the foreseeable future renting that property to anybody full-time. But again, we want full disclosure, so we put it in there. It will be for friends, family, vacationers, occasional vacationers. And I want to pay attention to what our neighbors are experiencing. And so, you know, as you guys, the Fryes, experience things that don't work for you, we want to hear about that. We want to make sure that we don't do anything that violates any of the covenants or existing conditions of this neighborhood. And that's why we bought here, so that we wouldn't be in a place where we're having to put people in a place where they're going to be experiencing things with their property that the covenants didn't allow for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Christopher. Based on what I'm hearing on the purpose for this property, does it not fall under the Airbnb regulations that were recently passed?
It, it does fall under the Airbnb regulations because that would be a second step. The second step would be the short-term rental process. They have to get the S U P first before they can get the short-term rental. The short-term rental, we don't, it's not saying that we don't allow, but if the neighbors do oppose a short-term rental, there's nothing they can do about it in terms of spiling petition. They can, of course, if they have covenants, they can deal with it that way. But yet there is a poster board, sort of a notification letter that the neighbor, that the client, that the constituent has to send to his neighbor, simply saying, if there is an emergency, if there's anything, if you need to contact us, this is a short-term rental, we give, they give the information of emergency contact, who to get a hold of, and there is a permit number on that paper. So there is a notification to the neighborhood that that is a short-term rental unit.
Anyone else? For motion.
So Chris, if, if he has CEOs coming in to meet with him, doesn't that come under home business occupancy?
That is a home occupation if he runs it from the house. Now, a home occupation, we look at a home occupation being that, yes, there are certain types of businesses you can run at your house and people can visit your house, but you also, you're liable for, in case they hurt themselves, you're liable for, for anything that occurs on the, on the property. We limit that based off the type of usage, the type of business. But if it's just consultation, if it's just someone talking or meeting, that would fall under the home occupation, which they are allowed to have.
So they have, they would have to get a separate license for that?
Yes.
They wouldn't have to apply for a rezone, though?
That would not be a rezone, correct.
Okay. Because their description is that it is a retreat. Obviously, they would be charging for a retreat.
Hence the, hence the short-term rental Airbnb. It depends on how they advertise it. They can, when you're advertising on Airbnbs, they, you can title it what you like, you can call it a retreat. You can, now, if they're inviting more than what is allowed, then that's when codes would get called, or that's when we would start a case in terms of like, you're doing an investigation. And if they're having a quote-unquote retreat with a number of people, then, then that's a violation of the usage of the property.
But if they're not advertising, if this is strictly with people that they know that they're bringing in for a retreat, so say, how does the county even know that it's being rented out?
We wouldn't, we, correct, we wouldn't know. And that's why we have been pushing this last few months and stuff to, to, to get Airbnbs in, in, not violation.
I make a motion to approve case number SU 25 dash 017 for a special use permit.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Oranga, second by Commissioner Lear to approve SU 25 017. Any discussion on the motion, comments? All the rule.
Commissioner Lear?
Yes.
Commissioner Oranga?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Acosta?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zerniak?
Yes.
Chair Zargis?
Yes.
The motion is passed 7-0.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Administrative approvals? Nothing. Thank you, Janine. Staff input?
Let Mr. Chair go ahead and update you all on our short-term rental project that we're trying to wrap up and complete due to the lodger's tax that the Board of County Commissioners just adopted. So what we've done is identified the short-term rentals that have been advertised on Airbnb, VRBO, and sent letters if they were not registered with us. So we're currently getting them registered. And if they do not have, if they are an accessory structure, accessory dwelling, they will need a special use permit. So we're doing all the investigations thus far. I think we've sent out, I don't know if I can remember the statistics, close to 100 letters. And we have about 65, 70 that have registered with us. And then we need a few that needs to get building inspections to ensure that they're, they were built to code and converted. A lot of them were garages that were converted to a residence. So we need to make sure that they are up to code and then they will come in for a special use permit.
And that, and that covers some of the objections we've had, we've heard today.
Yeah, but like Chris says, when they come in for the short-term rental permit, they're, the only notification that's required is from the property owner itself notifying their neighbors within 200 feet that they are operating this property as a short-term rental. And if there's an emergency, if they have any complaints, they need to call the property owner directly or the property manager, whoever's in charge of that. And I know that Airbnb have, have also changed their regulations and they do not allow parties, loud noises, and that kind of a thing. So I think the residents would have, would be able to reach out to Airbnb regarding those complaints. But really, all we regulate is noise, the number of people that are in the residence. We do allow them to have a specialty vent, up to 10 additional people, but of course, they cannot have noise and that kind of a thing. But the ordinance is pretty strict and goes into great detail. They need a million-dollar liability policy as well when they come in.
Are you also making phone calls?
I'm sorry?
Are you also phoning owners of properties?
Well, if, if we have their number. But we sent the letters out first and then when they call, you know, call in or email us, we do reach out.
And have you extended this to not only Airbnbs, but also to Harvest Hosts and Hip Campers and every other program?
Yes.
And how do you, was, that is not the way the legislation read.
Well, in terms of the lodger's tax, it does call out tourist-related lodging. So the hip camps are tourist-related lodging, the RV parks, the hotels, the inns, the bed and, I think the bread and breakfasts are specifically exempt from the short-term rentals.
Because they're licensed otherwise.
Yes.
But there are no structures on these Harvest Hosts and these Hip Campers. So I think you need to really review this again before you start following through on that. It, it doesn't cover.
Did you repeat that? Did you say that we should review it because of no structures?
You should review the, you should review the legislation that was passed because it says, it's indicating that it's a structure that has been built for this purpose, an Airbnb in this case, or, or, or anything like a structure. But when you're talking about Harvest Hosts, people driving their RVs too, they can park at Walmart. So what are you going to do to Walmart?
Correct.
I mean, and then you've got, and then you've got issues like Hip Campers, the very same thing. They can park at any business. And now you're starting to, you're starting to go through the process of citing these business owners. And I know because we're receiving phone calls as well. And they don't even have the right address, but they're still phoning.
We'll, we'll go ahead and look at it in a little more detail, but the way that we initially read it, it was lodging, tourist-type lodgings for the lodger's tax.
No, they're calling.
Staff input? Anything else? Commission input?
Bill? Janine, you know, one of the things that I've never understood is why we don't put a limit, time limit on the S U Ps, so that we can have a formal review after a certain number of years, whether it's five or 10 years or one year. I think we did this on one case where we put a time limit on. I think that ought to be standard practice. If there's no complaints within the time period, it could be an administrative function that you just renew it for another, whatever the time limit is. But if there are complaints, the way it is now, there's no, there's no way to address that other than through zoning. One way to do it would be to take away the special use permit and deny them that use. So I'd like to, I'd like to at least have a discussion about that and see whether that should not become a part of the S U P. I mean, it, it's, it's standard in most, most jurisdictions.
Yes, and historically, the ETZ did require time limitations as well. And the county ordinance required time limitations up to 25 years for S U Ps. But we found if we didn't get any complaints or anything, it was just a normal business and we kind of forgot about that review after 25 years. So, but now it's a little different since we have our GS, we can put notations on conditional type zoning, so it can be a little, a little bit different.
And it can pop up, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think it's something we ought to think about.
Okay, and we will add that to the list of amendments.
Thank you.
Because we are starting to work on amendment number seven.
Any indication on when you might present something to us?
I'm thinking maybe towards the fall, because we're pretty busy right now with everything that's going on with the new budget. Our department just got approval for seven new employees, five in code enforcement and two in building services. So we're going to have to do recruitments and try to get that going. And we've just been pretty bogged down with building permits that are coming in as well. So I'm thinking September.
Okay.
Hopefully. But in the meantime, feel free to give us any input you all have and we will add it to the list.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's issues in the UDC that need to be looked at again. I know I've, I've got a pet bit, I've got a pet peeve on a transit transitional type stuff. So I think a workshop, give everyone a month to come up with your ideas and go through the UDC again. Anything else? We have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Zerniak?
A second.
Commissioner Lear seconds it. Let's go, people. Thank you very much.